Financial and time constraints of normal city operations. Hangtown's Goldbug Park Development Committee is a nonprofit group that for more than thirty-five years has partnered with the city to make improvements and provide steady growth at Goldbug Park. Without the committee's vision, participation, and fundraising abilities, Goldbug Park would never have been developed into the amazing historic destination that it is today. And I know it gets repetitive, but I just can't say it enough. The volunteers out there are what make it happen, and they continue to do that, and Matt and I are very proud of their efforts.
Well, congratulations, Matt. Do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to know. Well, you don't have to, but I'm just, you know.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I just would like to reiterate that, everything that Steve said, and how wonderful the park is with all the volunteers. Susan Zito in the audience is representing the Goldbug Park Development Committee tonight. We were supposed to have the award, but it never arrived, so we were gonna share that with you guys tonight, but Charlie still has that, so... But it was a great honor to, you know, on behalf of the city and the committee, it was a great honor for the committee to receive this award, so thank you, Susan, and all the volunteers.
Susan, do you have anything you might wish to add to that?
I know coming from me this will be unusual, but briefly, I did want to thank staff for submitting the Hangtown Goldbug Park Committee for this award. Five hundred and thirty-five parks, districts, and cities, counties, and special districts in the state of California. I think there was six awards for champion of the community. Some of them were individuals. I believe we were the only agency that received it. And it's for the body of work for the thirty-five-plus years of volunteers, starting with Pat Cook as president, and then the transition president Bev Johnson, and now Charlie Basham. I volunteered to come this evening. Charlie had a prior commitment, but he did want to thank staff for, apparently this came as a bit of a surprise, we didn't know that Matt had submitted us, but in the awards for park planning and program delivery, and I think, I think the most important one was champion of the community. And if you go to the California Park and Recreation Society website, there's more about the other winners and some of the really innovative programs throughout the state, but I gotta say, I think Goldbug Park is the most innovative. We were certainly the only goldmine that won an award, and we did want to thank, because it has been a cooperative working relationship, although an odd one, that you have a city-owned facility with a 501(c)(3) supporting it, but in addition to the volunteers, a lot of that wouldn't have ever been there in terms of facilities if it hadn't been for Pat Cook and our legislators, who I think Pat always had on speed dial. They got us-
John Doolittle, right?
John Doolittle, yes. Many visits to Goldbug Park, he was informed he must make. Pat was probably the only person who would've demanded that of him, but we received a lot of money over the years, and it all went back into the park for the benefit of the community, as well as the larger area of folks. I think that you've already heard that during the goldplanning championships, we had fifty-six countries visit the park, and literally thousands of schoolchildren every year, they've started coming. And so it's very cool to just go out there for lunch one day and see all the activity going on. And this weekend, don't forget that the Rise and Shine Program, one of the locations will be Goldbug Park, and there's quite a bit of improvements planned. Trail blazing and picnic bench pointing, and if you wanted more information about that, (642) 5232, I believe is Steve's number. Some things you just don't forget. So thank you very much for allowing the presentation to be made more public at a council meeting, and on behalf of Charlie and the rest of the executive board, we thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, thank you.
Yes, you may comment.
As the official unofficial representative from the city councils of the Goldbug Park Development Committee, I would just like to thank not only the committee and the volunteers for their tireless work out there all these many, many, many years, but also staff. Steve and Matt, you do an excellent job in containing and channeling that enthusiasm. We have had some tremendous successes. The current committee does an excellent job working with the Park and Recreation Commission, with the Planning Commission, with city staff, and making sure that the improvements that they do develop out there through their own efforts and fundraising, continue to grow the educational experience at the park. As Susan mentioned, every year there's between six and seven thousand fourth graders from all over greater northern California that come to Goldbug Park. There is a waiting list to bring your class to Goldbug Park, and I think that is a testament to the successful partnership. And I would just like to recognize our two staff members that continue to do a great job to work with the committee and encourage them to continue to make great successes. Thank you.
I just have to say, Susan, it's nice to see you in the house tonight again.
Anyone else wish to say nice things about-
I would like to say, Susan, are you sitting over there next to Regina?
No.
Just kidding.
You just want to scare her now, is that it?
I had a question, but you answered it, and I wondered how many participants, I mean, and I think you said five hundred and thirty-five? According to... I should know better than to yell from the audience. According to CPRS, California Park and Recreation Society website, there's five hundred and thirty-five special districts, city recreation departments, and county recreation districts in the CPRS membership. So basically, everyone that runs a recreation department in California is a member, and it's up to those cities to submit. There's beautiful examples of some on their website, of some of the park districts that received awards for really innovative park planning, some really cool program delivery things in northern California, as well as southern California. It's pretty exciting to see what's going on that's purely for the benefit of their communities. And we were very, very lucky to be recognized for all these years with Goldbug Park and what it's brought to our city.
Thank you. All right, okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Goldbug Park, and all the folks that make it happen out there. Chief, chief, brief comments by the city council. Round the horn?
I just want to remind everyone that the big community cleanup day is this Saturday, so if you love our community and want to get out there and among four or five hundred volunteers, and work from about eight to one to beautify our city and move it forward, I'd love to have you join us. Google Rise and Shine 2017, and there's an Eventbrite sign-in sheet. You can look at all the projects that we'll be working on this weekend, and it's a really amazing community effort. And Steve, I want to thank you for, I know it takes an inordinate amount of coordination from city staff and Matt to make that happen, and I really appreciate that, so it's great.
Rise and Shine, what, when do you say it again?
Rise and Shine. Google Rise and Shine 2017, Placerville, and the page will come up. So hope to see you out there.
There you go. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Closed session report? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight in closed session, with respect to the real property negotiations, the council did not take reportable action. However, on the liability claim by Mary Stahl, the council did take action and rejected that claim unanimously with all five council members voting for rejection.
Thank you very much. Can someone move to adopt this agenda?
Move for adoption.
When you say jump, we say, hey, how high, Mr. Mayor?
Wow, that's a... You're like a Jedi, all of a sudden. I will give the, I will give the movement of the adoption to Patty, and the second to Tricia. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ceremonial matters, this one's gonna be fun. The first ceremonial matter is the introduction of our new police chief, James Ortega. Go ahead, give him a hand.
We have a round of applause.
Okay. I should've brought his bio. It's lengthy and impressive, and he's been in Sacramento as a Sacramento County Sheriff Officer for a long time, and it's all very good, and went through a lengthy process, and we had a wonderful ceremony today with his family, and more blue and green uniforms than you'd care to think about, and it was all very impressive, and we are just grateful to have a new Chief Ortega here as our, as our new chief of police. Would you like to say anything to these people? You already got to talk a little bit. You can say something else. You can stay right there.
Stay right here. I'll just keep it brief, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to say again to the council, thank you for your trust, and I had some remarks to the citizens of Placerville, but you guys weren't here this afternoon. I'm grateful for your trust and look forward to working as your police chief and keeping Placerville the envy of the Sierra foothills. We're gonna keep it a nice city, and look forward to meeting some of you, so that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anybody else on that one? Okay.
We're pleased as punch.
All right, and now we have a certificate of appreciation for interim chief of police, Dan Drummond. Get up here.
Thank you very much. Once again, now, who's higher?
not have found a better person to be the interim between the departure of Chief Heller and the introduction of James Ortega, and I think that we were all very lucky that Dan Drummond was the right person at the right place at the right time for the city of Placerville. And we will forever be grateful that he helped shepherd us through all of this. I did make a comment about him being very much like a fictional character, I won't say that one again, except that it worked out perfectly. So, does anybody else have anything to say in regards to that?
Just, I've had the chance to thank you earlier today, Chief Drummond, and just want to reiterate what our esteemed mayor said, which incredibly grateful to you, you were the right person for the job at the right time, and helped to move us forward and transition, a productive transition to Chief Ortega. And Chief Ortega, we are just delighted you're here, and really look forward to embracing you and your family in our community as you embrace us, so welcome aboard, and thank you again, Chief Drummond.
And I hope you'll come back and visit us every once in a while. Bring your family and have fun.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to thank Chief Drummond for his dedicated service to keeping the continuity, the service to the community, as well as working with our city manager in the very difficult task in finding and obtaining a quality candidate to replace our Chief Heller when he left. It was not an easy task, and certainly appreciate your sharing of your wisdom and experience with our city manager so that that process has gone smoothly and led to the introduction of our new chief. So thank you for your service to our community.
Well, thank you. Okay, now we're on to the public comment portion. This is time to comment on items that are not on our agenda. The city council cannot take action on any item except for some very unusual circumstances. We have some rules, and I will just go over them rather quickly here. Everyone gets three minutes. You cannot give your three minutes to someone else and give them six minutes. If you have prepared statements, please summarize them for us, as long as they stay within the three-minute boundary, and if you do have written comments, then please give them to the clerk so that we can have them for our official record. I would ask that you avoid applause. This might be an evening when there might be applause, but we kind of try to keep these things, if you have passion, speak passionately, but we try to keep them kind of neutral in terms of their effect, so... Without any further ado, oh, and be nice, don't say anything you wouldn't say about, you know, don't, what is it, follow the golden rule, okay? Follow the golden rule. And I'm the arbiter of when folks start coloring outside the lines a bit. So, anyway, so do we have any written comments? No, none. We have no written comments. Okay. The microphone is now open.
Good evening, city council, and welcome, Chief Ortega. It's so nice to see you. My name is Rebecca Green, and I'm sure most of you know who I am. Interestingly enough, following the funeral of our beloved Elliot Cohen, which brought about three to four hundred people to a service, which was just amazing, the city council of Sacramento is tonight meeting on a proposed tent city. Who do I give this to? And the really amazing thing is, is Placerville not too long ago had one, and it was very successful, and it was actually so successful, we ended up ending the program, unfortunately. But since then, eight or nine of our homeless people have died on the streets of Placerville, and it's heartbreaking, and it's not acceptable, and I'm just urging the city council to maybe look at some alternatives for a shelter for our homeless population, because once again, we've got, we've got programs in place, we've got the Theory of Change Group, which is doing a wonderful job, but they're years out on funding. And I believe that our beautiful city has room for its wonderful citizens, its beautiful homes, it being the gem of the Sierras, like you said, but we also have room for the least of these, and we have the room and the ability to protect our most vulnerable citizens, albeit, I understand, not the most attractive, not the most well-behaved, and not the most wonderful people on the planet, but they're still our people, they are our citizens, and we need to protect them. So I just move that the city council please consider some kind of summer shelter for the homeless and some kind of option that we can give them, so that we don't have people dying on our streets five days after the winter shelter closed. And then also, I would also like to propose, which I know everybody's, is on everybody's mind, we would like to put Elliot's bench back in front of Off Broadway. We would like to put it there with a plaque that says Elliot's Bench. We need to honor this citizen, because he was truly the least of these for us, but he was also the best example of who we are as a city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Don Vanderkar. My wife and I are longtime active residents of this community, this wonderful place. It's been some time since I've stood before this council, but with the recent passing of Elliot Cohen, I feel it necessary to again express my deep concern about the lack of care for some of our unfortunate citizens. I do not believe I need to tell you who Elliot is. He's perhaps one of our most famous citizens. In the recent past, I've attended memorial services, as Becky said, to eight or nine friends who lived on the street and died on our street, and as reported in the Mountain Democrat, actually, there were over four hundred people who participated in the memorial service for Elliot. Unfortunately, the pneumatic shelter operation closed just before Elliot's death, and there was no shelter for our homeless brothers and sisters, and during that time, there was extremely cold weather, including snow, so our homeless citizens suffered in that environment, and it no doubt affected Elliot. I serve on the Opportunity Knox Committee, working to define issues and resources within the county that will address the homeless concerns, but that work, as Rebecca says, is sometime into the future before we actually have an operating shelter. In the meantime, our homeless people suffer and die on the street. We need interim, an interim project to protect our homeless men, women, and children living on the streets. I understand the council is mandated by law to protect public health and safety. It appears that the city may be abdicating its responsibilities somewhat to the county in that regard. I do not believe it's appropriate for the city to take no action and to expect the county to assume your responsibilities. Just a few statistics. The pneumatic shelter has been operating in the form it currently operates for about six years during the five-hundred-month winter. Currently, there are six churches that open their doors to homeless people and volunteers from these churches, and about six more churches operate the program. We have about a hundred and forty volunteers involved in that project, and we have averaged about thirty-five guests a night, and we've peaked out at about seventy-nine, and we've provided service to over two hundred and fifty people. About thirty-eight percent of them are women, and we have had several families with children. The people of the pneumatic shelter work hard, we're tired, and we need help. Studies show it's cheaper to shelter homeless people than to keep them on the streets. Getting people off the streets will ease concerns of business and public health. Shelter gives hope and facilitates self-care and overcoming addictions. There is no shelter during the day during the winter, and throughout the rest of the year, there's absolutely no shelter, day or night. So I pose a question to the city. Will the city help us find a permanent facility to shelter people during the days and throughout the year when there is no other shelter, and reduce the suffering of our people and the dying on our streets?
Thank you.
You go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity. My name is Art Edwards. I'm the past president of Hangtown Haven and the current treasurer. I didn't intend to talk tonight, I came here just to support Don, but I noticed something that I wanted to share with you. There are new members on this board that I hadn't seen before. Three, and a couple of old timers. I don't mean you're old, I just meant you've been around a while. But I wanted to take this opportunity, because of the new members and what we've been talking about, to encourage you to think about, maybe, just maybe, this is the opportunity to reconsider the, what you did four years ago in closing Hangtown Haven, as Don was talking about, and Becky, and reconsidering letting us work with you to build a new homeless shelter at no cost to the taxpayer. What we need, of course, is your support. We can't do it without it, but we're willing and ready to go to work. If you'd like to work with us, we'd be very happy to meet with you, explain what we did before, and what our plans are, and all those things. It'd be a wonderful opportunity, because of what's going on now in our community and around the country, to really take charge and do it right, as we did before. I hope you'll have an opportunity to read our website, www.hangtownhaven.org, and see what we have done and what are, what we propose. And I want to end with a quote from the Bible, which is quite unusual for me, but Matthew, I think, said, quoted Christ by saying, "What you do for the least of mine, you do for me." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Melody Blair Moore. First time here, so you're all new faces to me, and I am to you. My roots in the area are deep, however, and my concern for the community is as well. The recent memorial to Elliot that you've all heard so much about, I think, tells us about the community's support for our homeless brothers and sisters. There were hundreds of people there, taxpayers and voters, and they were there out of love and concern. I've been a volunteer with the pneumatic shelter for the last couple of years, and really come to care deeply for many of these people, some of whom are here, at least one I know. Our experience with the winter shelter program tells us that shelters save lives. Don listed some of those statistics. I know for sure that in the last two years, and I think during the course of the pneumatic shelter, not a single person has died in shelter. And I know that twelve memorial services have been held in the last two and a half years for homeless people who have died on the streets. Shelters save lives. Not only do shelters save lives, but it saves money, both in incarceration and in use of the ER. It's really a much more practical solution, and I think we really need to look at the economy of it. Also, as a matter of public safety, the people who are in shelter are not committing crimes, they are in shelter. Everybody is safer when they are sheltered. Your job would be easier if they were all in one place and safe. So I really ask you to consider seriously the need for this community to provide permanent shelter. It's really a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Carrillo, and I volunteer during the winter months at the shelter. I work the shift from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. because I have a son, and that's when his time is with his father, and I need to get my time to myself, and I do that in volunteering. And what I see is, we do need a place for our homeless brothers and sisters, and we need to understand that two o'clock in the morning, there is a lot of medical issues that happen at two o'clock in the morning. There's people who pass out, there's people who have seizures, there's people who don't take their medications, and they're unfit to take their medications, and we have people who are still trying to enter this shelter. And that becomes a certain for me, because I'm working it, if they're an issue to public safety. We had one lady, I wish I could keep her in the shelter, but she had such bad gout on her feet that they were blistering and pestering and leaking, that she would be a public hazard to have in the shelter. And sad to say, I was like, well, we can have you sleep on the cement outside, like, right there. I would bring you coffee in the morning, and we can give you some stuff, but we can't have you inside. And then finally, it took an hour and a half of the EMT to convince her to go back to the hospital, to wash her feet and clean out her injuries. So what you guys are saying, we do need to fix the problem, but it also comes down to, I know how much the EMTs and the police officers are fighting to just organize the homeless community, because they're always on call. I'm pretty sure we had to call emergency services about six times in one night, because there was disagreements, there was arguments, or someone, sadly, my best... (sigh) Excuse me. One of my really good friends in high school, she got addicted to meth, and we had to turn her away from the shelter because she was clinically insane, and she could not be around other people. And that was a hard moment, and we tried everything, so it's, it's a mental disability. We have to face that, and how are we gonna do that financially as well? Because I love my friend Amanda, but you can only do so much, and she's out there on the streets right now, and I don't even know. But thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council and new police chief. Welcome to Placerville. Lorraine Nadeau, I've been working with the least of these for many, many years, San Quentin Prison, San Jose Juvenile Hall, et cetera. I am an ex-meth addict of twenty years. I've been clean for about twenty-three years, so I have a heart. I was asking God this morning, what should I say? Should I speak tonight? What he gave me is, I urge every single person on this council, in this government, police, EMT, et cetera, citizens, put yourself in the homeless's shoes. Actually, put yourself in their shoes. What if you were sick and on the streets? Or it's a hundred and ten degrees and you're on the streets? Being sick would be the worst thing. No roof, don't know where you're gonna shower, don't know where you're gonna go to the bathroom. Oh, just, you're, mm, don't know what's gonna happen to you. A lot of the women are raped, and there's gaps in the system. I'm working with some mental health and drug addicts right now that, okay, they go to the hospital when they have issues, but the hospital kicks them out, and there's nowhere to put them. to put them. They don't know if they're dual-diagnosed, mental and addicts. So there needs to be, number one, a shelter. There's got to be a property in this county, an old hotel or an old something that can be used as a shelter. There needs to be a detox rehab, there needs to be... Seems like the mental health, the old mental health in Diamond Springs is doing a fantastic job, the wellness center, but there's gaps. So, okay, so you're on the street and you're manic, you go there, and they say, "Two weeks for an appointment." That doesn't work. So Christ-like services is a day program that's awesome, but again, where do these people go at night? So between the... And Hangtown Haven worked very well. There's so many success stories out of there, Rebecca and Ken, Larry, who's working in Texas, and so on and so forth. So that program did work. So Ed, Art, and Dawn, and everyone that are trying to put something together, please put yourself in the homeless's shoes and support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Chief Ortega. I'm new to your community, and I'm also a member of Federated Church. I have a master's in psychiatric nursing, and I also went to seminary. I went to the funeral on this last weekend. One of the things that was most spectacular, I don't know if any of you attended that funeral, was that the brother of Elliot came and said, "This is the most wonderful city. We don't ever have this back in New York. Placerville is an amazing city." This was a city that took care of Elliot, that helped him. I think that that's something that we all need to pay attention to and believe in. If we can be better than any other city in this state, in this country, a city that says we take care of all of our people, I think we need to do it in collaboration with our business. Certainly, we're worried about having a drove of homeless people come here, but I know, if we're that special, that special to someone who flew out from New York, we can be that special. We can get together and come up with a plan together to help all of our citizens. The homeless people are a gift to us. They remind us that our government is broken, that we don't have good mental health services, and we don't have good services for all of our citizens. The biggest population of homeless are mothers with children. All of these people have gifts that we need, every single one of them. And if we help them, we will help each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Placerville. I am a homeless person. I am one that lives on the street. I, every day, find somewhere to rest my head at night that I'm going to be safe, out of the rain, and it scares me. It really scares me. Thank God I have a little dog, that all the shelters have let my little dog come in. I want to thank Ken, Becky. Their shelter lets me get a shower once a week. Shelley, at her shelter, who needs clothes washed? Take a bag, someone will take a bag of her clothes. I will never take a clean pair of underwear for granted, again, ever. Little things like that, you don't realize. You don't realize unless you're living that. And it's very, very, very degrading, very degrading. You know, I don't know... Oh, oh, you know, I'm not asking for handouts. Before, I became homeless because I worked 11 hours a day. I had a pocketbook full of money to get a place, but all these places nickel and dime me to death. Forty dollars for an application fee, forty dollars here. There's always going to be somebody better credit than I am, that they're going to take my money knowing they're not going to rent to me. So now, I'm on the street. I want to work. If I had the opportunity to have that stability, so I could get a shower, so I could go to an interview, so I could go to work presentable, I would be right there. And then if it was something, you know, that could allow me to get in a place and pay rent, where, you know, if you're clean of alcohol and drugs, you know? Or if you do this, if you do that, you know, if you abide by that, they, you know, will help you get into a place with whatever credit you have. That would be such a great resource, because there's no resources for me, unless I'm a single mother with a minor child. I'm a senior. I am a senior, a homeless senior, with no resources, none, none. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, it looks like we're done with that. Thank you very much for voicing your concerns and your opinions, and we appreciate that. And this is a very timely issue, and it's one that has been around for a while and will certainly be around for a while, often in the future. And I know that Councilmember Thomas has been working with the county and with some of the organizations, that they've been going through a process for a couple of years now, I believe. So I will, if you want to mention anything, that would be fine.
First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts. You are all very eloquent, and I really appreciate you being here. And you all brought up the complexity of this challenge, and it is layered, and it is complex, and it is heartbreaking, all at the same time. You know, Art and Dawn, you know, I was... We watched Hangtown Haven, you know, begin in its infancy stages and develop, and just like you said, it had so many success stories. Ken and Becky, I remember when you got there, and I remember when you left, and I went to your wedding, and just, you know, really proud of you. And, you know, there were a lot of success stories and people that I consider friends. And I, you know, I take my hat off to all the dedicated people that made that possible. It also breaks my heart to think that that solution was in place for the people of our community that we call our own, and it breaks my heart that Elliot never chose to live there, you know? And that's one of the challenges, too, going forward, is how do we have solutions that work for our community? And yet, there's also free will and people that choose not to take part. And that's something that confounds me. I have a family member on the street, myself, and he has refused help and resources. And going forward with, I think that's one of the reasons why I continue to dedicate my time and my creative thought to the strong collaborative that is being formed between the county and the city and the nonprofits. My gosh, the nonprofits, you do amazing work in our community. And, you know, I look forward to finding ways to strengthen what you do and support you and give you the resources to continue that for the benefit of our community. And, you know, Marshall Hospital, I know, is keenly aware of the gaps in mental health services. That, so many speakers brought up that critical need that we need to address in our community. So, you know, we hear you. I'm working along with you in the fight for solutions, and I know they never come quick enough, and yet, that's not stopping us from moving forward. So just thank you for being here, and, you know, I hear what you had to say. Also, it was brought up, the bench for Elliot. I do want to quickly address that, that that is a bench from Eldorado Transit, it was not a city bench. But I do want to let you know that through our Recreation and Parks Program, we have adopted a bench program in place. So you can, you know, see Mr. Yule, or I have this brochure here, that there's a process in place that you can select a bench and a place for it in memory of someone, so that might be, that might be an idea, too. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Hello, all of you. Good job. Okay. Thank you very much once again, and thank you for your civil participation in our comment process. It's always appreciated when people say what they need to say, they speak with passion, and they do it in a way that allows for everybody to have a voice in a conversation. So once again, thank you very much. You're welcome to stick around, it's pretty exciting. And actually, this agenda is fairly brief, so you could actually stay to the very end. But I'm going to give everybody five minutes, just in case you aren't going to sit around for the riveting consent calendar and the other things on our agenda, so... Everybody have a... Yeah, take a... There aren't too many cookies left.
The information for the adoptive bed is right here. Yeah, you can give that to someone. Great. Thank you.
So Daffy might want to speak. I don't know if she can reach the mic.
Well, hi. I'm just up.
The kids are reading the audio.
Yeah.
Well, I saw that, yeah. He's just like...
There's cookies over there.
I'm like, God, I missed.
She's going to definitely want to speak on 12.1. Daffy's definitely going to speak.
Oh, yeah. I bet she has strong feelings about that. I would expect nothing less.
Do you wolf? I think you're being funny.
No, never.
Wow, this is good.
That's exciting.
I didn't bring that up to him.
Because you're asking, you're asking, are the best people equipped in any kind of decisions to make a really important decision? And then everybody sat around and said, "He's exercising free will."
I have a question. Can I say one more thing? Because I got kind of emotional.
Well, come on up here.
I got kind of emotional.
You did a really good job. You did a really good job.
You did a very nice job.
I also wanted to mention that there's 200,000 homeless in California.
Oh, yeah.
And we are number one in...
California.
California. We're number one in a lot of things. We're also very, very aware of... Yeah. It was really hard. My best friend, I literally, we tried to get her in shelter, tried everything, and I saw her again come back, and she was so unstable back, and then we said, "I can't do it in my shelter." And I literally escorted her out, and I'm like, "I'm not going to do it on her day." It's really heartbreaking. But thank you for being a good speaker.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for sharing. Okay.
All right, let's... Let's... May is Bike Month, and I'm going to read through the events that are in Bike Month, just because I would have done it earlier, but I... Jackie No just sent this to me, and she'll, if she's watching, she'll probably hit me if I don't...
I'm sure she is.
It's on the minutes or less?
Oh, I know. Anyway, so May 4th is the, at 11:30, an Eldorado Hills Ride. So there's a ride in Eldorado Hills. On May 4th, May 5th is the Blue Oak Bike to School Day. May 5th, 6:30, Cameron Park Community Ride, that's in the evening. And they're just going to do something after that where you would build your own ice cream sundae, which I guess is okay if you've ridden a bicycle someplace. May 7th is the Great Scott Ride, which I understand is really quite something. That's like an honest-to-god...
Say that again?
The Great Scott Ride. It's, I think, down in Folsom, I think. May 10th is National Bike to School Day, and the North Side Bike to School Day. Let's see here, let's... Ah, on May 13th at 9:00 AM, we have the Schnell School Bike Rodeo and Family Ride on the Trail, and there's a flyer available. May 19th is the Bike to Work Day, which is, starts at 7:00. And this is actually Bike to Work with the Mayor, so you will get to see me ride a bicycle, which is pretty exciting, I think. 7:00 AM at the Mosquito Bus Station to the Government Center, and then there will be, like, coffee and donuts, I guess, for, once again, if you've ridden a bicycle, like, three miles, you should have some...
Donuts.
Donuts, I guess.
Health food.
That's the county one?
That's the one that starts up at Mosquito Park and Ride and goes over to the county offices. And that's the one I will be participating in. May 21st is the Fifth Annual Apple Blossom Bike Tour. These all have, like, websites and stuff. Let's see, blah, blah, blah. Annual Great Bike Ride at noon at the Government Center. And then, May 31st, a badge is awarded just for logging miles this day, or on any rainy day. I don't understand what that means, but apparently on May 31st, you get a badge if you look at a bicycle, apparently, so...
And there's lunch at the Government Center.
And there's lunch at the Government Center, which ought to get everybody out. So anyway, those are the bike... I would have mentioned that, and I didn't. I'm sorry, it's kind of disjointed, but I have now... Jackie, if you're watching, I did what I said. Okay. The Consent Calendar is our next item. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So do any council members wish to pull any of these Consent Calendar items?
No, sir.
Okay. Would the public like to comment on any of our Consent Calendar items?
Yes, dear.
Looking at you. Oh, anyway. Okay, we'll bring it back here.
I'll move for the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
All righty. Items, we pulled no items from the Consent Calendar. We have no ordinances, no public hearings. We do have a discussion slash action item. Bye, Chief Drummond.
Bye, chief.
Good night.
Farewell.
Consider a request, 12.1, consider a request for a leave of absence from Planning Commissioner Peter Wolf, Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff received an email request from Commissioner Peter Wolf requesting leave of absence. That was on April 10th. He and his wife will be doing a, what I would say, an epic bike ride. They've already done, I think, two or three epic bike rides, say, coast to coast across the United States, the entire western coast of the United States, from Mexico to Canada. So on this particular bike ride, they will be starting at Key West, Florida, and riding north all the way to Nova Scotia.
Wow.
They'll definitely get a badge on the 31st of May.
And maybe a donut.
And a donut.
And maybe even lunch, if they...
Yeah. They're going to get, you know, they're going to get all sorts of food in May. For the... Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Didn't know that was possible.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
So their trip is basically going to be from the end of April, April 29th, and they will be returning approximately July the 5th. So they will be missing, or Peter will be missing, four Planning Commission meetings, and puts them in, fortunately, puts them in conflict with our standards as far as attendance. And so we bring this item to you to consider approving Mr. Wolf's... it and take this up, so that we have some sort of a, so that we know, and I know that the Office of Emergency Services has all kinds of things too, but I think just for our little city of Placerville, and I said, this, this is what prompted it, and it's the Oroville damn thing. And I mean, these people were so adamant that it real, I can't forget it, what they, you know, told me, and so.
The mayor of Yuba City did not learn about the evacuation except through Channel 3.
And the mayor of Oroville was on vacation, and nobody knew how to get a hold of her. So that was, you know, I mean, there were just.
So there were some interesting things.
Yeah.
Anyway, it does, it does beg, it does kind of push out the point. There was a couple of good things that came out of it. One is that, you know, we tend to look at maps and things, and we go, oh, well, you could just take this road over here. One of the big challenges they had in Oroville was half the roads coming out of the city were all flooded because it had, you know, it had been raining a lot.
And the gas stations were, they ran out of gas.
The gas stations ran out of gas. Grocery stores ran out of groceries.
Grocery stores ran out of, so they were not prepared for an emergency.
And, and if you think about it, it was kind of a big giant event, and they didn't even actually have a disaster happen.
Yeah.
The disaster that they were all running away from never actually occurred.
Thank God.
If there had actually been a disaster, it could have been very bad. So anyway, it was, there's a lot to be learned. Most of it just is making sure that, that, one of the things that Supervisor Vera Camp stressed, and because of his experience in fire protection, is not just having plans but exercising them, making sure that you frequently go in and do, do what-ifs and do exercises to make sure that, that your assumptions work, that they actually talk to each other and stuff like that. So anyway, that was, that was my fun SECOG thing.
Good.
Yes. Okay. SedCorp.
I haven't had that last meeting yet, but it's happening.
Okay. Should we have a resolution for that? No, anyway. And a two-by-two?
Nope, not since last time.
Okay, great. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Okay. City manager and staff reports.
Nothing further from us tonight, I don't think.
Okay. We do have something upcoming items, items tentatively scheduled for the next regularly scheduled city council meeting of May 9th, 2017 include, oh, this will be fun, parklet approval, Christmas parade sponsors, Blair's Lane Bridge contract change order number 17. Nice. Unified confidential and supervisory employees memorandum of understanding proclamation for Skin Cancer Awareness Month. Okay. That's, folks, that's it. Chief Ortega, our meetings usually are a little longer than this. I'm just thinking that it was your presence.
Don't get, don't get used to this.
So I won't be out of here at 7:00 every, every time? Okay.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody. Drive safely.